Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining the Arlington National Cemetery Confederate Memorial Removal Virtual Public Scoping Meeting. The presentation will begin promptly at 7:00 PM Eastern Time. Good evening. I am Renee Yates, the Director of the Office of Army Cemeteries. I will be the moderator for today's virtual public scoping meeting. Before we begin, I wanted to cover a few administrative items. The slide shows how attendees can set up the closed captioning in Zoom. To turn on closed captioning, if you're using a mobile Zoom app, click on the captions button. If you're using Zoom on a laptop computer, click on the show captions button. You can find these buttons on the bottom of your screen. As presenters speak, words will scroll across the bottom of your screen. You can turn this function off by clicking the hide captions button in the same area of your screen. Before we discuss the project at Arlington National Cemetery, I want to set out some ground rules and etiquette for this public meeting. First, all attendees will have their microphones off during the duration of the meeting until such time as those who have pre-registered to provide verbal comments will be called. Once called, they will have the ability to use their microphone. At that point, each person is asked, will be asked to have no more than one minute to provide their verbal comments about the project. We have many members of the public who have asked to speak tonight. In the unlikely event that there is extra time at the end of the public meeting, I will open the floor to a limited number of others who didn't get the opportunity to pre-register to speak tonight, but would now like to do so. If you're interested in having that opportunity, please state that you want to make a verbal comment tonight into the chat box now or at any time during this meeting. I ask everyone to please be courteous and respectful of others' opinions and statements. I would like to stress that if anyone makes rude or inappropriate comments, they will be removed from this Zoom meeting and will not be allowed to re-enter. The audio and visual portions of this meeting are being recorded, and a transcript is being written, all of which will be made available on the project website at a later date. If you do not wish to be part of the public record of this meeting, please do not make any comments, written or verbal, during the meeting. Lastly, you should have any, should you have any issues in hearing or seeing the presentations, entering questions into the chat box or any other technical issues with Zoom, please type your issue in the chat box. Throughout today's meeting, the public can submit any questions or comments into the chat box. We will keep a record of all chat box submissions. For those who are not familiar with Zoom and would like to use your chat box, this slides provides some instructions on where to find the chat icon. You will want to click on that icon to open your chat box. You will then be able to type your comment or question into the chat box. And once you've finished typing, please be sure to click enter to submit what you have typed. I appreciate your patience as we work through these necessary topics on how the meeting will work and how you can provide written comments. Now I'd like to introduce our first presenter today, Colonel Andrew Weicher, Director of Engineering, Arlington National Cemeteries, and will officially, he will be officially kicking off the meeting. Colonel Weicher, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Ms. Yates. I'm glad to be here to support the team and hear from the public. This is an important project requiring a very thoughtful approach. In order to comply with the Congressional mandate and Secretary of Defense's Implementation Guidance to remove the Confederate Memorial, Arlington National Cemetery must comply with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966, known as Section 106, and the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969, known as NEPA. Public engagement represents an important component in this deliberative process. I am honored to introduce our presenters for this meeting. They have worked hard to provide a meeting that is designed to provide information about this project and encourage public involvement. You have already heard from our moderator today, who has gotten us off to a good start. Ms. Renee Yates is the Director of the Office of Army Cemeteries. Our cultural lead is Ms. Caitlin Smith, the Cultural Resources Program Manager for Army National Military Cemeteries, which includes Arlington National Cemetery. I invite you to visit the project website, where you can understand more about the proposed action and learn how and when the public can get involved. The project website is shown on this slide, and it is www.arlingtoncemetery.mil/about/confederate-memorial-removal. There is also a project email that is included on the slide. Although we will accept comments received through the email address, I encourage you to access the comment form mentioned previously from the project website. But the project email, as shown, is anc-commemorative-worx@army.mil.
Thank you, Colonel Weicher. Now I'd like to provide everyone a quick summary of what we will cover during this virtual public meeting. Our compliance team will lead, will provide an overview of the project and share details about the Confederate Memorial. This will be followed by an explanation of how the National Environmental Policy Act process works and why an environmental impact statement, or EIS, is be, is required for this project. Then we will discuss the Section 106 process for this effort, as well as the various public involvement pieces that are related to both NEPA and Section 106. Following those presentations, I will open the floor for those who noted in the registration form that they wanted to provide a verbal comment during this public meeting. Finally, I will provide a brief overview of the next steps for the project and note when other opportunities for public involvement will take place. This scoping meeting provides an opportunity for us to share information on the project and process. It also provides an opportunity for the public to provide input to be considered during the development of the project. We are interested in hearing from you today. In particular, we are hoping to get some insights from you on the questions shown on this slide. For the Environmental Policy Act, Congress and the Department of Defense require the Army to remove the bronze elements of the Confederate Memorial. How should the Army remove the bronze elements? What should the Army do with the bronze elements of the memorial? What environmental impacts could result from these actions? And what should be done to reduce the environmental impacts from these actions? For more information on NEPA, please see the Citizens Guide to the National Environmental Policy Act: Having Your Voice Heard For National Historic Preservation Act questions, the Confederate Memorial contributes to the Arlington National Cemetery's National Register Historic District. It may be, and it may be individually eligible, eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. Do you agree or disagree with this assessment of individual eligibility? Why or why not? Are there other properties in this area of potential effects that potentially might be eligible for National Register eligibility on the Army, that the Army has not identified? Will the removal of the Confederate Memorial cause an adverse effect to ANC's historic district or other historic properties? What are ways the Army could avoid, minimize, or mitigate potential adverse effects to ANC's historic district or other potentially eligible historic properties? For more information on Section 106 process, please see Protecting Historic Properties: A Citizen's Guide to the Section 106 Review. It can be found at https://www.achp.gov/citizens-guide-section-106-review. Now I'd like to introduce Caitlin Smith, our Cultural Resource Program Manager for the Army National Military Cemeteries. She will provide an overview of the project and share some background information about the Confederate Memorial.
Thank you, Ms. Yates. ANMC is here tonight to provide you, the public, with information on the proposed project to remove a monument that commemorates the Confederate States of America from Arlington National Cemetery. I would first like to provide you with background information as to how the project came about, and then I will describe the regulatory processes that the Army must complete before executing a potential undertaking. In 2021, Congress established the Commission on the Naming of Items of the Department of Defense that commemorate the Confederate States of America or any person who served voluntarily with the Confederate States of America, otherwise known as the Naming Commission. In addition to changing the names of several military installations, the Naming Commission recommended several actions with regard to the Arlington National Cemetery Confederate Memorial. The Naming Commission recommended that the bronze statue atop the monument be deconstructed and removed, leaving the granite base and foundation in place to minimize the risk of inadvertent disturbance to graves. The Naming Commission's recommendations became law in late 2022. This federal law requires that these recommendations be implemented by January 1, 2024. ANMC understands that the removal of the Confederate Memorial must be conducted in manners that ensure the safety of the people who work at and visit the cemetery, while also protecting surrounding graves and monuments. The entire process, including disposition, must occur according to applicable laws, policies, and regulations. These will be described in great detail later in this presentation. But first, let me briefly describe the monument and its location within the cemetery for those that may not be familiar with it. The monument under discussion is located within Section 16 of Arlington National Cemetery, a section which contains the remains of Confederate soldiers. The graves and markers are arranged in concentric circles, with the inscriptions facing toward the center of the circle. There are 441 Confederate-style, government-issued, white marble grave markers and one private marker in this section, for a total of 442 grave markers. The Confederate Memorial sits in the center of the circle with four of the graves adjacent, one at each side, including that of the memorial sculptor, Moses Ezekiel. A circular drive separates this section from the rest of the cemetery. The memorial stands approximately 33 feet tall and features a 30-foot-tall bronze sculpture atop an approximately three-foot-tall polished granite base. The top of the sculpture is a larger-than-life female figure that represents the South. One of her hands rests on a plow and the other holds a laurel wreath. This figure stands upon a pedestal of four urns, each representing one year of the Civil War. Underneath the urns, a frieze decorated with 14 shields represents each of the 11 Confederate states and the three border states of Kentucky, Maryland, and Missouri. Just below these shields, a bronze ba relief depicts 32 mostly life-size sculptures portraying mythical gods alongside Southern soldiers and civilians, including two enslaved African-Americans, a man and a woman. This ba relief depicts the sculptor's own interpretation of the antebellum Southern society as it related to enslavement and the Civil War. The large bronze base includes three inscriptions and the name of the German foundry where the bronze was cast. The next portion of this presentation will provide you with an overview of the two interconnected compliance processes ANMC must follow and complete before any federal undertaking or action occurs. ANMC is currently executing a coordinated NEPA and NHPA compliance effort to ensure our federal agency meets the requirements of all applicable laws, policies, and regulations. In the next slides, I will explain which each process entails, clearly outlining the steps involved, and how you, the public, can keep engaged throughout the process. These processes are designed to ensure that the public has a voice in the federal decision-making process before any federal undertaking or action occurs. Again, your participation is a key component of this deliberative compliance process. All interested members of the public and federal, tribal, state, and local agencies are invited to participate. Before undertaking a federal action, all federal agencies, including the Army, must ensure compliance with NEPA, also known as the National Environmental Policy Act. This ensures that all federal agencies explore reasonable alternatives to the proposed action, that potential impacts to the environment are thoroughly analyzed, and that the public has an opportunity to provide input. As part of the NEPA process, the federal agency must identify the purpose and need for the project. The purpose of this project is for the Army National Military Cemeteries to remove the bronze elements of the Confederate Memorial because it commemorates the Confederate States of America. The need for this project is to comply with the recommendation from the Naming Commission that addresses military installations and monuments that honor or commemorate the Confederacy, stating that all such installations should be renamed and any monuments removed. The Commission requested that the bronze statue atop the memorial be removed, leaving the granite base and foundation in place to minimize the risk of inadvertent disturbance to graves. They requested that the Department of the Army consider the most cost-effective method of removal. As was stated previously, the Commission's recommendations became law in late 2022 and must be completed by January 1, 2024. ANMC is analyzing the environmental impacts that could result from implementing the proposed action or any reasonable alternatives. The agency does this by developing an environmental impact statement, also referred to as an EIS, for the project. In this case, the impacts are related to the decision to remove the bronze elements, the disassembly of the bronze elements from the stone base, and the storage and potential future relocation and reassembly of the bronze elements. Obtaining public feedback through efforts such as this public meeting is part of the NEPA requirements. Through the EIS process, the agency will solicit relevant input from all interested parties. The agency will make this information available to all stakeholders through the ANC website. Updates will be publicized via the Federal Register, the ANC website, and social media platforms. These actions are in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969, the Council on Environmental Quality and EPA Regulations, and the Army's NEPA Implementing Regulation: Environmental Analysis of Army Action. The purpose of the EIS is to inform decision-makers and the public of the likely environmental consequences of the action and alternatives. The EIS will explore the project's potential environmental impacts, both beneficial and adverse, on a variety of resources. Some of the resource areas that might be analyzed are: impacts to threatened or endangered species, air and water quality impacts, impacts to historical and cultural sites, social and economic impacts to local communities, aesthetics, visual noise and vibrations, and health effects. Once an impact has been identified, the agency will need to identify and list best management practices, BMPs, and mitigation measures to offset an impact. Again, for more information, please visit our website. The public is invited to comment on what beneficial or adverse environmental impacts could result from these actions and what should be done to reduce the impacts. The draft EIS will evaluate potential alternatives to the proposed action and evaluate the potential impacts of each. To create the draft and then final EIS, ANMC is soliciting public comments through the NEPA and Section 106 processes. It would be especially useful during the scoping process to receive public comments that provide ideas for future storage and interpretation of the bronze elements, among other substantive comments related to the identification of significant environmental issues and impacts on historic properties within the area of potential effects. These types of substantive comments will be considered within the draft EIS. The EIS will examine several potential alternatives. Different disassembly alternatives could include: deconstructing the memorial in a manner to minimize damage. The elements would be decon, would be documented, inventoried, catalogued, crated, and prepared for transportation and long-term off-site storage. The work would be consistent with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties and the Code of Ethics and Guidelines for Practice of the American Institute for Conservation. This method would best facilitate possible reconstruction in the future. Another disassembly alternative might be a more rapid deconstruction without the same requirements for protection, documentation, and storage. Once the bronze elements have been disassembled, they may be stored in a location determined through the EIS and Section 106 processes. We seek comments on methods of and locations for storage, along with possible alternatives for reassembly in the future. This future state might include options for interpretation and education. Because Congress requires the removal of the memorial's bronze elements, the no-action alternative does not meet their requirements. However, the NEPA EIS process requires the inclusion of a no-action alternative against which the impacts of the other alternatives can be considered, and therefore it will be included in the EIS analysis. I wanted to share with you the key milestones associated with the NEPA EIS process. The eight boxes shown at the bottom of this slide depict the general flow of an EIS. The Notice of Intent officially announced the start of the NEPA EIS process. That occurred earlier this month on August 4. Currently, we are in the public scoping period, which goes through September 2. The comments received during the scoping period will be reviewed and considered as the draft EIS is developed. A completed draft EIS is estimated to be released in the fall of 2023, which will provide information on the proposed action and alternatives, including existing conditions, affected environment, and environmental impacts. The release of this draft EIS will align with the next public comment period. As with the public feedback from the scoping period, any comments received during the draft EIS comment period will be considered as the final EIS is being developed. When the final EIS is released, there is a required 30-day waiting period before the Record of Decision, also known as the ROD, ROD can be finalized. Once the ROD is finalized, the proposed action may move to implementation. Now that I have shared this NEPA overview and process information, I would like to talk about how the NHPA and the Section 106 process tie into the NEPA EIS process as the potential impacts to cultural resources form the biggest component of this EIS. Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act requires federal agencies to identify and assess the effects its actions may have on historic properties. If it is determined there are effects on historic properties, the agency is required to complete the Section 106 process before implementing the proposed project. Under Section 106, each federal agency must consider public views and concerns about historic preservation issues when making final project decisions. A N M C has determined that the proposed monument removal is a federal undertaking with the potential to cause adverse effects on historic properties, and therefore has begun the Section 106 process. I would like to provide a brief overview of the process so you can better understand the steps involved, where we currently are, and what remains ahead of us. The first step, initiating the Section 106 process. In this step, the agency identifies who should participate as consulting parties. Consultation is between the federal agency, the state historic preservation officer, and other consulting parties, including but not limited to the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, certified local governments, and members of the general public with economic, social, or cultural interest in the project. The second step is identification of historic properties. Here, the agency identifies the historic properties that could be affected by the undertaking. These are sites, structures, buildings, districts, and objects that are listed on or eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. The federal agency must do three things: one, identify possible historic properties; two, decide whether the identified properties are listed on or eligible for listing on the National Register; and three, decide whether any of these historic properties are going to be affected by the project. If a historic property is identified, the information is submitted to the Preservation Office with the agency's determination of national register eligibility. The third step is the assessment of effects. In this step, the federal agency determines if historic properties may be adversely affected. Adverse effects are those that diminish characteristics qualifying a property for inclusion on the National Register. The fourth and final step is resolution of effects. In this final process step, if the agency and consulting parties find there are adverse effects to a historic property, then the agency and consultant parties must work to reach agreement on a resolution. To do this, the agency must explore measures to avoid, minimize, or mitigate adverse effects to historic properties and reach agreement with the state historic preservation officer and the advisory council on historic preservation in some cases. If they agree on how to resolve the adverse effects, they then formalize this in a memorandum of agreement, or M O A. An executed and implemented M O A is a legally binding agreement that contains the stipulations and mitigations the federal agency must carry out in order to proceed with the project or undertaking. Throughout the entire Section 106 process, the federal agency must consider public views and concerns about historic preservation issues. For more information on this project or to provide a written comment, please visit the A N C website. The results of our Section 106 process are also an important component of the NEPA E I S. The process will feed information on impacts to cultural resources into the environmental impact statement. That is why A N M C is working these two compliance procedures in conjunction. I would now like to update you on the Section 106 actions A N M C has taken to date. The first step was for A N M C to initiate the Section 106 process with the Virginia State Historic Preservation Office, otherwise known as the Department of Historic Resources, or D H R, which occurred on February 9, 2023. Next, A N M C engaged the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, the A C H P, which is the federal agency responsible for historic preservation issues for assistance with the Section 106 process. After initiating consultation with the D H R and A C H P, A N M C issued an invitation to consulting parties and the public through social media, the A N C website, and local news outlets. To better understand the Section 106 process, it must be noted that there are five main participants in the process: the agency official, the state historic preservation office, the advisory council on historic preservation, the consulting parties, and the public. Consulting parties are a formal designation related to Section 106, and for this project include the state historic preservation officer, representatives of local governments, and additional consulting parties. Additional consulting parties are defined as those individuals and organizations with a demonstrated interest in the undertaking due to the nature of their legal or economic relation to the undertaking or affected properties or due to their concern with the undertaking's effect on historic properties. In general, the public is not considered a consulting party, but the public is an active participant in the process, and the public's views are an essential component of an informed federal decision-making process. The list of consulting parties is not considered complete at this time, and it continues to be updated and revised as we receive new requests to be included or not included in the consultations. Interested parties can request to be a consulting party at any point during the Section 106 process. We are currently in the second step of the Section 106 process, identification of historic properties. In this step, we have determined an area of potential effects, or A P E. The A P E is the geographic area within which an undertaking may directly or indirectly cause alterations to the character or use of historic properties. This includes the location where the project may be visible and/or audible. This project is located in the Arlington National Cemetery Historic District and involves work in previously disturbed areas. The A P E for the proposed project is shown on this slide. There are four previously listed or potentially national register-eligible historic properties within the A P E. The previously listed resources are the Arlington National Cemetery Historic District, the Arlington House Historic District, and the Fort Meyer Historic District. The potentially eligible resource with the "in" in the A P E is the Confederate Memorial. The A P E also includes unlisted historic properties contained within the three historic districts that are adjacent to and within the view shed of this proposed undertaking. This slide shows a list of historic structures and features contributing to the A N C, Fort Meyer, and Arlington House Historic Districts, all of which are located within or adjacent to the A P E. There are no known archaeological resources within the A P E. For more information on this, please visit our website. The public is invited to comment on the area of potential effects. The determination of eligibility is also included in this stage of the Section 106 process. A N M C is consulting with the D H R to apply the National Register criteria to properties within the area of potential effects that have not been previously evaluated for eligibility. For this project, that includes the Confederate Memorial. To make this evaluation, the D H R required A N M C to complete a Phase II Intensive Level Survey Report to evaluate the individual eligibility of the Confederate Memorial to the National Register. This survey determined that the A N C Confederate Memorial is potentially individually eligible for listing in the National Register under Criteria A for its association with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of our history, and Criteria C for its embodiment of distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction or that represent the work of a master or possess high artistic values. Additionally, the memorial's integrity was assessed for seven aspects or qualities: location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. For more information and to read the report, please visit our website. The public is invited to comment on whether the memorial is or is not individually eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. A N M C continues to consult with the D H R on the second step of the Section 106 process, identification of historic properties. As previously discussed, A N M C has provided the D H R with a list of historic properties in the area of potential effects. Following extensive research and reporting, A N M C has determined that the Confederate Memorial is potentially individually eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. A N M C is awaiting concurrence or comment from the D H R on this determination. Once a final determination is made and all historic properties have been identified that may be affected by this project, then A N M C can initiate the next step in the Section 106 process, which is the assessment of effects. Throughout this process, A N M C seeks substantive public comments. For more information or to provide a written comment, please visit our website. To review, A N M C is currently undertaking a coordinated NEPA and NHPA compliance effort to ensure our federal agency meets the requirements of all applicable laws, policies, and regulations. Remember that the results of our NHPA Section 106 process form the most important component of the NEPA E I S. The Section 106 process will feed information on impacts to cultural resources into the environmental impact statement. That is why A N M C is working these two compliance processes in conjunction. NEPA and NHPA in particular are designed to ensure that the public has a voice in the federal decision-making process before any federal undertaking or action occurs. Since public involvement is an important component of both, there are several comment periods built into the processes. The comments received will be incorporated into several products: a Section 106 M O A, a final E I S, and a Record of Decision. Again, your participation is a key component of this deliberative E I S process. All interested members of the public and federal, tribal, state, and local agencies are invited to participate. The center section of the slide displays the three public comment periods for the project. The public comment and scoping period formally began with publication of the Notice of Intent, or N O I, to prepare an E I S on August 4. The scoping process is intended to focus the E I S on potentially significant adverse impacts and to ensure public participation in the E I S development. The scoping process allows for open discussion regarding issues of public concern and permits the consideration of relevant substantive matters in the E I S. A N M C will consider comments received during the public scoping period in preparation of the draft E I S. Further updates on the public comment process will be publicized via the Federal Register, the A N C website, and social media platforms. The draft E I S public review period will begin with the publication of a notice of availability in the Federal Register. This is anticipated to occur in fall 2023. The Army will publicly announce information regarding the availability of the draft E I S and the public review period. The final E I S will take all comments into account. Mindful of the timeframe contained in Section 370 of the 2021 N D A A, the Army expects to publish the final E I S after all public comments on the draft E I S are fully considered. The Army will complete the E I S process by issuing a timely Record of Decision following the Environmental Protection Agency's notice in the Federal Register that the final E I S was filed. I will now turn it back over to Ms. Yates to discuss in more detail the scoping process and what types of comments we are hoping to receive. Ms. Yates?
Thank you for that overview of the public involvement process, Caitlin. At this point, we are going to pivot to discussing ways in which comments can be provided during this meeting as well as afterward. We appreciate the comments and questions that have been submitted to the chat box during the presentation. We will incorporate the information provided into the official record of the meeting. Questions that have not been addressed in the chat box, which are appropriate to the subject at hand during this meeting, will be addressed in follow-on material. All right, to get started, I would like to discuss more specifically the types of comments we are seeking again during this public scoping period, which began Friday, August 4, and will continue through September 2. During the scoping period, federal, state, tribal, and local agencies, along with affected members of the public, are invited to participate in the identification of relevant issues that will influence the NEPA analysis, including alternatives, impacts, and mitigation measures. This public meeting is one piece of the process, as are the written comment submissions being made available. Rather than general comments that are in favor or against the bronze elements removal, we seek substantive comments, which are those that specifically describe potential new alternatives or impacts or suggest optional ways to meet the need of the project. All comments must be received by 11:59 PM Eastern Standard Time on September 2 to be considered within the draft E I S analysis. Comments may be submitted through the website shown here or emailed to anc-commemorative-works@army.mil. Under the Relevant Documents section of the project website is a link to the notice in the Federal Register, which includes the mailing address at which to send the written comments. Any comments received after September 2 may be considered during the next phase as the E I S development. Shown on the screen now is a copy of the online comment form that you can access by visiting our website, the A N C Removal of the Confederate Memorial. All public comment forms received on or before September 2 through web form as well as email or regular mail will be processed and analyzed for their applicability in helping to determine different alternatives and impacts related to the memorial removal of the bronze elements of the Confederate Memorial at A N C. To reiterate, this scoping meeting provides an opportunity for us to share information on the project and process. It also provides an opportunity for the public to provide input to be considered during the development of the project. We are interested in hearing from you today. In particular, we are hoping to get some insights from you on questions shown on this slide. How should the Army remove the bronze elements of the memorial? What should the Army do with the bronze elements? What environmental impacts could result from these actions? And what should be done to reduce the environmental impacts of these actions? The Confederate Memorial contributes to A N C's National Register of Historic District and may be individually eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. Do you agree or disagree with this assessment of its individual eligibility? Are there other properties in the area of potential effects potentially eligible for the National Register that the Army has not identified? Will removal of the Confederate Memorial cause an adverse effect to Arlington National Cemetery's Historic District or other historic properties? What are ways the Army could avoid, minimize, or mitigate potential adverse effects of A N C's Historic District or other potentially eligible historic properties? Before I call the first commenter tonight, I'd like to review our meeting etiquette and process for commenting. For an individual to provide verbal comments today, they were required to note that when they registered for this meeting. For our comment approach today, each commenter will be announced before they can come off mute and provide their verbal comments. Each commenter is limited to one minute. We have over a hundred individuals that wish to speak tonight, and that will provide everyone that opportunity. At the end of the minute, the commenter's microphone will be muted and we'll move on to the next commenter. I will announce that your time has expired. At the right side of the slide shows how the commenter will come off mute. Once I call your name, I ask that you please click the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen to let us know where you are. The meeting host will then take you off mute and your mic will now be active. You should state your name for the record clearly. You will then have no more than one minute to provide your comment. At the end of that time, I will announce your time has expired and your microphone will be muted once more. As stated, we have a large number of individuals who've requested to speak tonight, but should there be any time remaining at the end of this public meeting, then anyone who did not pre-register to provide verbal comment might have the opportunity to do so. If you're interested in this possibility, please submit your name in the chat box at this time. And always remember, you have the opportunity to provide us your written comments on our Arlon forum. A full list of registered commenters is going to be displayed shortly, so you will know the order in which you will be speaking. All commenters are asked to please keep your comments civil, respectful, and directed toward the substantive comments we are seeking during this public scoping period. Comments that provide the possible alternatives for the disassembly, storage, and interpretation of the bronze statue are particularly useful for this process. To be clear, if anyone makes rude or inappropriate comments, they may be removed from the meeting and will not be allowed to reenter. If you're calling into the meeting on your phone, you can press star nine to virtually raise your hand. That will let the meeting host know where to find you. They will then let you off mute. We ask that you identify yourself by first and last name for the public record. Then you will have no more than one minute to make your comment. At the end of that time, I will announce your time has expired and your microphone will be muted once more. For today's meeting, the following public have requested to make an oral comment. the following public have requested to make an oral comment. This slide and the next reflect the individual, the list of individuals who have registered to make an oral comment during today's public scoping meeting. We have over 100 people who want to make comment today. The order of this list was based on when the commenter submitted their registration for this meeting and prior to 11:59 PM on August 22nd. We will follow the numbered order in this list, starting with number one. Please take a moment to find your name on the list if you requested to provide an oral comment for today's meeting. Each commenter will have up to one minute to provide their comment before we move to the next commenter. This is the second slide showing the order of individuals that have requested to make oral comment for today's meeting. Again, please find your name on the list if you requested to provide an oral comment before the midnight registration deadline. I will apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. You will be asked to state your name properly for the record at the start of a one-minute comment period. Once again, each commenter will have one minute to provide their comment before we move on to the next commenter. If you did not identify you wanted to make an oral comment and you registered for day's meeting, please be sure to submit your comments in writing. The website that provides you access to the comment form has been shown previously and will be shown again before the meeting ends. The top of this slide provides the instructions I ask for each commenter that you will need before making your comments. As a reminder to all our commenters, any disruptive or just disruption or disturbance to the meeting may result in removal. Our first commenter tonight will be Karen Bennett. I ask now that Karen raises her hand using the instructions on the screen. Once off mute, please state your name for the public record. You will then have no more than one minute to provide your verbal comment before being put back on mute. I will then call the next commenter, so please be ready to provide your verbal comments when you're called. Ms. Bennett, please raise your hand so your time can begin. Ms. Bennett, if you're having trouble raising your hand, please put a note in the chat for our host team. Kirk Lyons. Your time begins. Aaron Moore. Christopher Bedford. Again, I ask for the public when your name is called to please raise your hand if you would like to speak. If you click the box requesting to speak on the registration form and you've since requested not to speak, please let us know that in the chat. Can I ask the individual that's registered as Samsung SM-A146U? We've brought you off mute to speak.
Can you hear me, Ms. Yates?
Yes, sir, I can. Please state your name.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Brian Turner. I'm a member of the Sons of the American Legion Squadron 92 in Hollywood, Florida.
Your time started, sir. You have about approximately 50 seconds.
Yes, ma'am. Disassembling a monument such as the Ezekiel, Moses Ezekiel reconciliation monument. What purpose would that serve environmentally? And that's what my, my question would pose, that it would have no impact on the environment as far as public safety and visitation. It is a true representation of a Confederate veteran who did serve at the Battle of Newmarket. And his representation was commissioned and was approved by Congress. And was honored by President McKinley. That's just my statement and my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Aaron Moore. The caller with the 15409171435 number, come off mute. If you're on a phone and you were trying to come off mute, you needed to punch star six? I'm going to move on to Christopher Bedford.
No, Fred Gregory.
Alright, sir. Please go ahead.
Do I have the mic?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, a little bit of history is involved here. After the Civil War, Presidents Lincoln and Grant worked hard to reconcile the North and the South. Lincoln pardoned the restored property rights to all who engaged in the war. In 1898, McKinley, President McKinley held a peace jubilee where he shared, quote, end quote. In the spirit of eternity, we would like, we would share with you in the care of the graves of the Confederate soldiers. Sexual feelings no longer hold back the love we share for each other. The old wag flag, the old wag flaves, way, old wag waves over us in peace with new glories. And, and just, just summing up, I think with the monument's destruction, the reconciliation message that Lincoln, Grant, McKinley, Taft, and Roosevelt advocated will be lost. The statue's demise will not unite, but only further divide. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Christopher Bedford. Please raise your hand if you choose to speak. Kirk Lyons. Philip Gamble. Wade Alfred. Major Webb. Robert Floyd. Sir? Mr. Floyd, go ahead, sir. You have to unmute yourself, sir.
The removal, thank you, ma'am. The, my name is Robert Floyd. The removal of this memorial from Arlington National Cemetery will constitute immeasurable harm to our national heritage, the Arlington National Cemetery Historic District. And it will open wounds greater than any perceived pain critics attribute to its presence at Arlington. Secretary Austin's decision to implement the naming commission's recommendation was neither informed by NEPA nor NHPA consultation. NHPA and NEPA after the fact is unacceptable. Arlington National Cemetery therefore must consider a no-action alternative that leaves the monument where it stands because no mitigation strategy can compensate for the removal of this memorial. Nothing can adequately mitigate the removal of the reconciliation memorial because no other location in the United States possesses equivalent significance as Arlington. Arlington is the nation's most sacred shrine and is inextricably linked to the American Civil War. Confederate veterans are American veterans as directed by Congress. The history of the memorial, where it stands, what it represents cannot be adequately replicated at any other location because no other location carries the same significance as Arlington National Cemetery.
Thank you, sir. Your time's expired. John Moran.
Hi. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Dr. John Moran. This is on interpretation. ANC describes it as, quote, "a monument that commemorates the Confederate states of America," unquote. But that is a false description. This is a memorial to the Confederate dead, which was its first name. And there's a difference between a memorial and a monument. A memorial honors the fallen, a monument, you know, commemorates achievements in life. And Congress, when they established the naming commission, they said they had the authority to remove only, quote, "names, symbols, displays, monuments, and paraphernalia." The naming commission appears to have realized that this memorial was not quite in their authorization. And that's why there's all this talk about bronze elements, which I think would be a little bit of equivalent of a commission that is not allowed to remove a memorial, taking old Abe and tossing him in the reflecting pool and saying, we only, we only resituated a marble element. And to sort of go through this process, there's been a terrible false representation of this memorial by the Department of Defense. They've erased the swords turning to plowshares, the poem about simple obedience to duty, the speech by President Taft that said this was not a memorial to the lost cause, and all of this evidence about the themes of peace and and the purpose. The reason I'm interested in this is that my great
Sir, your time's expired, sir. We would ask, put the rest of your comments in, in written form, please, sir. H. Edward Phillips III.
Hello, this is Edward Phillips. First of all, thank you for letting me comment. Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Perfect. From a perspective of historical monument and historical memorial, and that's what really this is. And it is a memorial to the dead. And when Arlington was first created, obviously it's created a cemetery. And, you know, Confederate veterans were buried there. This is a monument that is part in parcel of the historic nature of Arlington. Additionally, it is mentioned on the application for the National Park Service as a, a element of, a supporting element of ANC being on the register, which was approved in 2014. There is no other alternative other than keeping it in place. On page 16 of the third report by the naming commission, they come in and even talk about destroying the bronze elements. We as a nation can't go down this road. This is wrong. This is not correct. You know, and also I go back to the fact that the NEPA comment period and NHPA comments, that analysis wasn't done on the front end, which it should have been done, and that itself is improper. And I understand DOD trying to push this because the administration wants that. However, we have to really consider, are we a people and a nation that destroy historic monument, memorials in a cemetery? We have been told the best place for these memorials are museums and cemeteries. This is the nation's greatest cemetery, and it is unlike any other. And it holds a special place.
Sir, thank you. Your, your time's expired, sir. Thank you. Lillian Oranga. Lillian Oranga. Bryce Wade. Mr. Wade, I need you to unmute yourself on your phone. Sir, star six will unmute your phone. We'll come back to Bryce Wade. Kind of get Pamela Foster. Pamela Foster. No sign. Ted Eman. Freeman Jones.
Yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to provide comments at this forum. Uh, just for background, I'm a twenty-six-year Army veteran, a Virginian, and a patriot of an undergraduate degree in history, graduate degree in military history, have written a book on the Civil War. I strongly disagree with the politically motivated decision to move the historic statue and bronze elements from the Confederate Memorial and ask that the commission not rush to remove until all lawsuits have been settled. And hopefully the majority of Americans have an opportunity to address this disgraceful effort. The congressionally mandated decision is not irreversible as future responsible legislators may reconsider the harmful effects this mandate that was passed during a period of national turmoil, a scourge of presentism, and knee-jack reactions. This is possible prior to two thousand twenty-four. Bottom line, removal's disgraceful act. It's impossible to relocate without disturbing the remains of veteran Americans on site. There is no more appropriate location of this work of public art than the soul of all American cemeteries. This obviously will have an adverse effect on historic properties and the entire Northern Virginia community. Clearly, this site is eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. As an option listed tonight, I strongly support a no action alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir. Next is Joseph Judson Smith III. Joseph Judson Smith III.
This is Bryce Wade.
Sir, I'll call you next. Just one minute, sir. Mr. Smith, we're gonna unmute you just one minute. Mr. Smith, you should have the ability to unmute your, your microphone. Should be in the bottom left of your computer, sir. Mr. Smith, if you still choose to speak, could you please put a note in the chat? We'll come back to you. Mr. Bryce Wade. Mr. Bryce Wade. Ben Jones. George Williamson. Buddy Witherspoon. John Trent.
Thank you, Director Yates. Um, I would like to specifically address a few components of section one oh six in HPA. On question number one, I would agree with that statement. The other comments I would like to have would be in relation to question number three and question number four, as far as the historical and cultural sites. The removal of the bronze elements of the Confederate Memorial would have a significant impact to the art, artistic effect that was created by Ezekiel Moses. Taking a monument or, uh, an element that is thirty-three feet and reducing it to three obviously has a significant impact on that artistic, uh, interpretation of that. If you would allow me, I would also like the, a personal comment in here, which is, I had two, uh, second great uncles, William Andrew Rice, Company A, Thirty-seventh Mass- Massachusetts Infantry, and David King Rice, First Texas, Company C, who faced each other at Gettysburg. My wife was at ANC July sixth of this year, one hundred and sixty years after my two uncles faced each other. She was there at the burial of her aunt, and she is a, um, deceased now aunt, and her husband will be buried in ANC. Cultural impact of that, removal of that monument, will affect all of my ancestors from Josiah Wapu Hole, who was a revolutionary veteran all the way through the, the rest of the wars that I have had ancestors who have participated in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would like to ask the, those that are speaking, I would ask you to please restate your name for the record when you start speaking. Thank you. Steve Herring. Kirk Lyons.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
My name is Kirk David Lyons. I'm from Black Mountain, North Carolina. I have thirty-one Confederate ancestors who I guess, under the current administration, would be considered as traitors to this country, but they served honorably in duty and resisted an illegal invasion. And the attempt to take down the Confederate Reconciliation Memorial and Arlington National Semer- Cemetery, if the Nazis did this in Europe in the nineteen forties, they would have been prosecuted for it at Nuremberg as a crime against humanity. This statue, this, uh, memorial sculpted by the first internationally renowned American Jewish sculptor, Moses Ezekiel, taking this down smacks of anti-Semitism, and that's the message that it sends to the world, for the Army to take down this masterpiece that belongs to the people of the United States. We, the people, own that monument, not the Army, not the United States. The Army are the stewards for the people of that monument. And again, it would be a crime against art and a crime against humanity to take the Moses Ezekiel masterpiece, the Confederate Reconciliation Memorial down. And I ask that this committee, uh, and that the Army and Arlington National Cemetery keep that monument and memorial exactly where it is and leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bryce Wade.
Good evening. Uh, this is Bryce Wade. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So, I have, uh, a couple of things. First is I think it should be put on the historic register of, uh, or register of historic places. Uh, second is how does the Army, how is it going to reconcile with this, with their diversity and inclusion? Um, they're alienating a whole section of the country, all of the, I have eleven ancestors that fought for the Confederacy, defending their homes and families. Um, and also how are they going to reconcile it with anti-Semitism? This is a work of art done by a Jewish American, uh, who's buried at its base. And then how are they gonna, they're already having recruiting issues. So how are they going to reconcile this with, uh, the recruits, especially in the southern states? That's the majority of their recruiting. Uh, the majority of the, uh, military is made up of men and women from the South. Um, yeah, I just don't see how they're going to, uh, reconcile this with, with the nation. Um, so that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we're now on number twenty-two, commenter twenty-two. Terry Klema. You should be able to come off mute. Terry Klema.
Hello?
Yes, you can go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, Terry Klema. Um, good evening. There is no way to mitigate the removal of such a priceless, historically significant, and universally renowned work of art, centrally located in close proximity of the grave sites of the fallen soldiers who perished while protecting home and earth. By all accounts, the New Memorial, New South of Reconc- or Reconciliation Monument meets multiple criteria to qualify in its own right for inclusion in the National Register. Specifically, the memorial and its location within Arlington National Cemetery is associated with significant historic events, associated with the lives of persons significant in our past, represents the work of a master, and possesses high artistic value, and yields info- info- in- information important in history. Clearly, the context of the New South Memorial at its present location within Jackson Circle exemplifies the expression, "The whole is greater than the sum of its parts." Any attempts to remove or dissemble portions of the memorial would destroy its historic value. As to the Arlington story, particularly attention must be paid to the date of May twenty-fourth, eighteen sixty-one, when at two AM the property was seized and has remained into complete control of the United States government. Any subsequent instances within Arlington from that date forward of refusal to provide suitable grave sites or memorials recognizing the service of others must rightfully be attributed to those responsible and not blamed on the Confederate soldiers or its memorial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number twenty-three, Julie Hardaway.
I'm Julie Hardaway. My comments are meant to inform on the historical details of the reconciliation monument. The memorial monument serves as a headstone for the Jewish American sculptor Moses Jacob Ezekiel that was designed, uh, by commission with the United Daughters of the Confederacy. The premeditated and deliberate acts to remove or alter any grave site markings of Confederate soldiers' final, final resting place at the hands of the US government is not to be supported by US tax dollars. Ezekiel was a military cadet at VMI, and to dishonor his memory is not a precedent to set as this nation depends on cadets for future leadership with implied promise of respect and gratitude for selfless service. Removal erodes public trust in the military. The central idea of the monument outlined in the contract with the United Daughters of the Confederacy is peace for the living and honor for the dead. It does not commemorate the Confederate states of America. By removing a monument to reconciliation, a monument to everlasting peace, our children and grandchildren will never see or know how two countries came together as one, how their deeds which caused division should never happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Number twenty-four, Letta the Shirt. Letta the Shirt. Number twenty-five, Susan McCroby.
Susan McCro- Susan McCroby here.
We can hear you, ma'am.
The New South Memorial was funded by the United Daughters of the Confederacy in the spirit of healing and reconciliation of a once war-torn nation. Any undertaking here should not introduce a second act in division of America. We cannot diminish the historic memorial here. It's one of a, with purpose. It binds the wounds of the nation's history, and it's definitely a jewel for inclusion on the National Register. The owner of the land should get that National Register paperwork done and done quickly. And any conversations of past and current national defense should always see the sun rise and set on the lines of this memorial to our dead. It should not be desecrated by order of our Department of Defense. It's unimaginable to find a plot of graves of dead American citizens who answered a call to arms that is memorialized here, now slated to be removed. A memorial where a long list of US presidents from like McKinley to Obama have honored selfless service of soldiers to the homeland and laid a wreath in memory of valor. We must continue the work that is done here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Number twenty-six, Linell Segal. Thank you. Number twenty-seven, Jennifer London.
Hello, my name is Jennifer London. My husband is buried in Arlington Cemetery. Someday I hope to be buried with him. His ancestors fought in the Confederacy, mine were aligned with the North. The Civil War divided families just as it divided our country, like all wars that occurred, occurred for complex reasons, opposite economic interests, cultural values, and widely debated state rights. It is unfortunate that slavery has been placed entirely on the back of the Confederacy. Less than twenty-five percent of Confederate soldiers were slave owners, while almost half a million slaves also existed in the North. At the time that the war broke out, thirteen thousand free blacks turned to almost four thousand slaves. Fourteen percent of our population was represented by free slaves, and five hundred thousand were recorded as mixed, white and black. Today, America is the most diverse and inclusive country in the world. There are more mixed relationships in America today than ever before, and over fifty percent of our, of our school-aged children are minority status. We should memorialize the country that we are today. We should memorialize the country that we are today by reflecting this reality and leave the monuments of the past tell the story of the past. Following the Civil War, Lincoln called on the country to bind up the wounds of the nation, saying, "With malice toward men, with charity for all." The Confederate memorial was commissioned by Congress to facilitate this process of uniting the country. Generations of presidents, including Obama, have laid wreaths at the monument. Located in the cemetery where Confederate remains are interred, it aligns with the tradition initiated by Arlington Cemetery in the early 1900s of establishing a new section for military veterans and to a specific war, all of my members to the monument.
Ma'am, your time's expired. Thank you. Number 28, John Zebline. John Zebline, you have the ability to unmute your, your own mic? John Zebline. Sir, can you unmute yourself, please? Sir, we'll, we'll address that offline, sir. We can help you to get that. We'll come back to you, sir. Number 29, Robin King. Robin King. Number 30, Garrick Sapp. Go ahead, Mr. Sapp. Garrick Sapp, sir, you should be unmuted. You're good. Sir, if you're on the phone, it might be muted as well. We can't hear you. Sir, we'll come back to you. Number 31, Will Kitchen. Mr. Joseph Judson Smith III.
Can you hear me this time?
Loud and clear, sir.
All right. This is Joseph Judson Smith III. I strongly urge and if I'm allowed to demand that the commission not recommend an illegal act of moving a grave marker, including its components. Such action is a violation of the National Defense Authorization Act, if I understand it, Section 370J. Even more important than the illegality of destroying this memorial is the moral implications in the paradox of destruction of a monument to peace, harmony, and reconciliation. If this is how this commission would like to go down in history, proponent of divisiveness and destroyer of harmony and reconciliation?
Sir, if you had completed your comments, we lost you after reconciliation. So please put in the chat if you'd like, there was something else you'd like to make sure we understood. Number 32, Brian Turner. Number 32, Brian Turner. Mr. Sapp? Mr. Garrett Sapp?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Yates. I'd, I'd like to comment on whether the Confederate Memorial may be individually eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. According to the Phase Two Level Survey, it is eligible under two criteria and it only needs one. Notwithstanding the dubious history and bias, Dr. Allison Winkelstein and others came to that conclusion in the report. At least that is, that is my reading. They, they absolutely concluded that the Ezekiel Monument would qualify. Yet we might tear it down anyway. Thank you very much.
Number 32, Brian Turner.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to reinstate that the fact that the Ezekiel Reconciliation Monument stands as a representation of that, of Moses Ezekiel, who firsthand saw battle at Newmarket. I would like to know that people to know that this monument should be on the National Historic Register. I'm not sure that that would protect it, but the Department of the Army and the DOD should recognize the fact that we do not remove any monuments or memorials to soldiers by an act of Congress, 1958, Confederates or US veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number 33, Mike Holmes. Mike Holmes. Number 34, Randy Crook. Randy Crook. He's there. Mr. Crook, you're unmuted. Please go ahead. Mr. Crook, if you need to unmute your phone, potentially. Your mic has been unmuted. We can see you're able to talk. Mr. Crook, we'll come right back to you. Number 35, Stuart Schimmler.
Hello, my name is Stuart Schimmler. To the question, will it cause an adverse effect in ANC's historic district? Absolutely. Desecrating Jewish graves illegally tends to do that. You see, the naming commission went outside of its remit when it recommended to destroy the New South Memorial. As Warren G. Harding, the President of the United States, stated at Ezekiel's funeral at Arlington in 1921, is this would mark his grave. He called it also a monument to an indissoluble union, which means it doesn't honor the Confederacy. So how did we get here? Well, the naming commission decided to use modern definitions and retroactively apply them to historic events. So they just make up a modern definition for a grave marker and apply it to 1921. Heck, they did the same thing when it came to individuals and if they voluntarily served. Take a modern definition of citizenship, apply it to 1861. But the boldest play against historical facts is when they try to make the process of reconciliation an honor to the CSA. In fact, Calvin Coolidge stated in front of that memorial in 1924 on Memorial Day, "Another Republican from Vermont, your country respects you for cherishing the memory of those who wore the gray. You respect others who cherish the memory of those who wore the blue. In that mutual respect, may there be a firmer friendship, a stronger and more glorious union." End quote. Coolidge shows that honoring Confederate soldiers is not honoring the Confederacy.
Randall Crook. Sir, you should be able to speak. Mr. Crook, sir, I'll come back to you again. Number 36, Joy Shank.
Joy Shank. The memorial needs to stand. Removing the memorial is illegal because it's a grave marker. The enabling legislation excluded grave markers. It's also illegal because the Army ignored the enabling legislation that required local sensitivities to be considered. Removal of the reconciliation memorial is also unconstitutional and it's an attack on America's Judeo-Christian heritage. It's unconstitutional as it represents a bill of attainder. This is a 109-year-old reconciliation memorial. Removing it destroys our history and our culture and divides us further. Even President Obama in 2015 did not want any of the Confederate names or statues removed because he stated it was all about reconciliation. President McKinley said every soldier's grave made during our unfortunate Civil War is a tribute to American valor. It would be unconscionable to remove this memorial, this grave marker.
Thank you. Number 33, Mike Holmes. Mr. Holmes, you're there, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. My name is Mike Holmes. Weptumpka, Alabama. I am descended from four different Civil War veterans, a fact that I'm very proud of. I understand that this is a public hearing on the removal of one of our country's most inspirational and revered monuments, Reconciliation Monument of Arlington. After our Civil War this month, it was sponsored by the leaders of both the North and the South and is respected by all. This radical proposal to remove this monument is specifically illegal on the face because it is a grave marker as specifically described in the considered directive. Also removed the monument is illegal because the Secretary of Defense ignored the responsibility of considering local sensitivities. This is a grave site of American war dead and an international tourist destination and one of our nation's most sacred shrines. Clearly, there are plenty of sensitives to be considered. Removal of this monument would be a betrayal of the hundreds of thousands who fought and died for their cause in this conflict and for their families and defendants. If America cannot accept its own reconciliation, how can we promote it to other war-torn cultures around the world? The answer is clear and resounding. We cannot. Let us remember, we cannot change our history, but we can most certainly learn from our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 37, Volpe Boykin.
Yes, ma'am. Do you have me?
Loud and clear, sir.
Volpe Boykin, Virginia. The congressional mandate did not include grave markers. So this entire thing is not following the code as it was passed. Even the French, a lot of the German Nazis, to have monuments over their graves in Le Combre, France. Who better to not want a soldier's grave on their land but the French? Even some of the most despicable governments on the earth, leave the dead alone. And I have friends in Israel that are following this and I can tell you they definitely think that antisemitism is involved because a Jewish person created this monument and it marks his grave. And it's also embarrassing to me from friends and family I have in other countries that the United States of America would stoop this low. The monument should be preserved if it is removed because after the 2024 elections, I assure you there will be immense political pressure on the new controlling political party and president to have it reinstalled. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 38, Thomas Arnold. Number 39, William Gravely.
Hello?
Sir, loud and clear.
All right, my name is William Gravely, like my father and my grandfather and his father, all the way up to the early 1800s. The monuments and memorials were built to heal the wounds of war for generations to come, to come together and remember war and its brutality so the mistakes of the past are not to be repeated. To most people of the South and Virginians like me, remember the federal government's invasion of Virginia, resulting in loss of freedom. Now, my grandfather asked his grandfather once about the war. He said, "It doesn't matter now. We're all American." Now, he fought in the 29th of Virginia in Company D. So I'm asking for no action. I'm not quite sure what message the military is trying to send to the inhabitants of Virginia by removing a cultural respective piece of art of reconciliation of Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 40, Mitchell Newman. Mitchell Newman. Ernest Blevins.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, loud and clear.
Thank you. My name is Ernest Blevins, Master of Fine Arts and Stark Preservation, West Virginia. I'm an SOI-qualified architectural historian, history. Previously worked at West Virginia Shippo and currently works in 106 in the private sector. I'm a life member of the Sons of Union Veterans, Sons Confederate Veterans. My comments, please start my time. I've written about Union deferent monuments that are messengers placed by the past to remind the future, to remember I've written about Union deferent monuments that are messengers placed by the past to remind the future, to remember and understand history. A reminder that will go to go to the libraries and museums, not to be hidden in them. Yes, the monument is individually eligible under criterion, A for event, B for Ezekiel, and C for architecture. The adverse effect of removal cannot be addressed minimization or mitigation. Mitigation will require the removal of the monument and will not be adequately compensated, which cannot be done moving it from public view at all. This is a bookmark from the past where the participants directly involved in the war reconciled. And for us to, for our future, we show a treasure, the message they put forth and for us to send to our descendants. It's an artwork invoking a real black woman who appeared in Ezekiel's early drawings as a grave marker for Moses Ezekiel and arguably a headstone to the Confederacy, marking the end of that period. As such, they're excluded from the naming commission's scope. Removal is subtraction and divisive. Leave the monument and tag it in the city to be a bookmark for future generations to treasure and use to remind them to visit museums and read the history. And I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number forty-two, Scott Howell. Sir, just go ahead and unmute your mic. You should have the ability to do so. Mr. Powell, can you unmute your mic? There you are, sir.
Yeah, this is Scott Powell. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my ancestors go back to sixteen thirty, uh, with the Puritans who settled north of Boston. In fact, almost all my ancestors come from the North. And I would just like to say that, to say that the reconciliation monument commemorates the Confederate states is a false representation. Uh, who would know better than McKinley, Taft, and Wilson, who oversaw the conception, the building, and, and the, uh, the unveiling of this great monument? Who would know better than them? And none of them talked about this as a Confederate monument, but rather a monument of reconciliation, reunification, peace, uh, and harmony. This is great. And, you know, frankly, you know, and I would also point out that on the monument itself, there are eleven shields and four of those shields are Kentucky, Maryland, Delaware, and West Virginia. On the reconciliation monument, on this so-called Confederate monument, those were not Confederate states. So this monument also celebrates those states, but the removal is a slippery slope.
Number forty-three, Benjamin Holmes. Benjamin Holmes. William Gant. Gant, you were, you were off mute a minute ago, but you went back on.
Mic check.
Loud and clear, sir.
All right. So, um, my, my biggest thing is on what would happen, the effects. And first, I do think this would, uh, be an individual, um, uh, on the D H R as a, you know, or whatever. But, um, my biggest thing is on the effects of what this would have on the eighty-eight million, uh, ancestors that, that, uh, of Confederate veterans. And I, I worry that it would have enlistment problems. Um, uh, I really think that, and that's where you get most of your warriors is from the South. And I want to end with this, dear Secretary Lloyd Austin, sir, from one God-fearing American to another, I am more than willing to love and honor you and your history. Are you willing to mine? That's all.
Thank you, sir. Number forty-five, Andrew Johnson. Mr. Johnson, you're on mute. Go ahead. You're, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Uh, this is Fred Gregory in Barreville, Virginia. I'd just like to conclude my previous remarks.
Sir, I'm sorry. We only have one minute for each, uh, each speaker. Uh, we have several, we have over sixty people waiting to speak, sir. Number forty-six, Gene Kaiser.
Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Mr. Kaiser, yes, sir.
You, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Gene Kaiser Jr., historian and consulting party to the Section one oh six process. When the Ranger Memorial in former Fort Benning was desecrated by the same legislation that threatens the Confederate Memorial in Arlington National Cemetery, Brigadier General Joseph S. Stringham, Chairman of the National Ranger Memorial Foundation, wrote this to his Rangers and said, "The naming commission's recommendations are without verification. Implementation of dramatic radical edicts and shifts in policy at issue here are frequently accompanied by inaccuracies, stupid interpretations, injustices to survivors, and a strong political slant offensive to substantial sectors of society." That is also the case with the Confederate Memorial. The naming commission left out the memorial's primary history, which is the reconciliation and reunification of our country. The Confederate Memorial is not in the naming commission's remit. Congress did not mandate the specific removal of the Confederate Memorial. The environmental impact of demolishing the Confederate Memorial surrounded by five hundred and eighteen graves in concentric circles that are an integral part of the memorial means that Arlington National Cemetery itself will be a desecrator of soldier graves. How can Arlington remain our most sacred burial ground if it dishonors graves that President McKinley said were tributes to American valor? The Confederate Reconciliation Memorial should stand forever as it was intended as a testament to peace, patriotism, and the greatness of the United States of America. And it should clearly keep on the.
Sir, I'm sorry. Your time expired. Number forty-seven, Stan Latta.
I'm Reverend Dr. Stan Latta. Our first and most important constitutional freedom is religion. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. Attempted removal is an unconstitutional and prohibited congressional attack on America's religious heritage. Of all the monuments and memorials in Arlington National Cemetery, Ezekiel's sculpture contains the only memorial that includes Holy Bible scripture verse Isaiah two four. And they shall beat their swords into plowshares and their spears into pruning hooks. Proverbs twenty-two, twenty-eight commands us, "Remove not the ancient landmarks which thy fathers have set," which is no action. The impact on removing the Ezekiel Memorial impacts our nationwide religious heritage with irreparable harm which is unmitigated and is unconstitutional.
Thank you. Forty-eight, Teresa Rome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Teresa Rome. For several years, we've heard that memorials should be in cemeteries. This one is in a cemetery off the beaten path. How is it that President McKinley, who was a federal soldier, could recognize that the blue and gray were willing to fight as one in the Spanish-American War and therefore acknowledging reconciliation, but now it's a problem in twenty twenty-three? How is it that Howard Taft also acknowledged reconciliation, but it's a problem in twenty twenty-three? How is it that we were told that memorials have not been inclusive, however, this one has inclusivity engraved on a surface? How is it that we talk about antisemitism in this country, and yet this masterpiece by Jewish artists will be taken down in pieces? How did we change from a nation of history to a nation of selective history? This is also a constitutional issue violating the First and Fourteenth Amendments. To me, it's a discrimination against the blue and the gray. It should remain. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to try number thirty-four, Randy Crook.
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Sir, loud and clear.
Okay. Good. U S Army, Germany, uh, as a chaplain with the American Legion now, I've visited many of the graves of Americans in Normandy, Belgium, Luxembourg, and General Patton also. Also, French, Italian, Dutch graves, A B M C, and.
Sir, we're not able to understand you. Mr. Cook, we, we can't understand you. I think we're losing your connection. I think we lost him again. Forty-nine, Jenny Wodowski.
Hi, my name is Jenny Wodowski. Today, I would like to say that this is to inform on the history of the memorial to be located on the Historical Registry. McKinley, President McKinley said it best, "Sectional lines are no longer the mar of the map of the U S. Sectional feelings no longer holds back the love we bear for each other, fraternity is the national anthem." He goes on to say, "The valor of the common soldier, a truth we should hold in the highest esteem, not destroyed with words or acts." In nineteen oh six, the committee began to work on this memorial. In nineteen oh seven, the Daughters took over this memorial. The great memorial stone, unlike the smaller military headstones at Arlington, was not funded or installed by the government. It was a private commission and a private space provided by Arlington National Cemetery for the U D C to install a suitable commemorative memorial, one approved by Arlington and at the expense of the U D C for the War of eighteen sixty-one to sixty-five. And a space that for Confederate remains of the fallen were interned. A similar plot was given to the National Society to the Colonial Danes for the Spanish-American War that many of our men went back to fight for.
Thank you. Number fifty, James Whitehead. Number fifty-one, Terry Shiroki. Terry Soroki. Please go ahead. Terry, go ahead. You should be able to speak. Terry, I'll come back to you. Fifty-two, Hugh Brennan. Hugh Brennan. Harold Edgerton. Harold Edgerton. Number fifty-four, Gerald LaFergie.
Hello there, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, ma'am. I'm a historian of the Civil War, War Between the States, originally from Vancouver, and now I reside in Sydney. And I'd like to address point three, that removal of the Confederate Memorial in Arlington National Cemetery, which is the equivalent of the Republic of Ireland's Glasneven National Cemetery, would be a great disservice to history. The presence of the monument there is an opportunity whereby persons can challenge the historiography of the lost cause and also as a springboard to gain knowledge, such as how the Confederacy via the eighteen sixty-two near-clinch treaty with Britain and France was going to abolish slavery and was going to do so again in the Duncan F. Kenner mission. And, for example, there are about forty pieces of primary evidence to show Robert E. Lee opposed slavery and that he supported black Americans voting in the post-war in the same terms as Abraham Lincoln. In short, I advocate a course of non-action, of removal of the Confederate monument in Arlington National Cemetery. It is a point of world, it is a point of world history, not just American. Thank you.
Thank you. Number fifty-five, Brendan Castle. Brendan Castle. Number fifty-six, John Coffindaffer.
Good evening. Lieutenant Colonel John Coffindaffer, United States Air Force, retired, uh, combat air rescue. Point I want to bring up is how do we mitigate the removal of a memorial to American reconciliation? This memorial was erected as part of the reconciliation movement in America, ignited by the victory of the Spanish-American War, where prior Confederate soldiers fought for the United States, shoulder to shoulder with their once-Union counterparts. This memorial stands unique in world history when a conquering nation honored the dead of its vanquished. When President Woodrow Wilson accepted the memorial on behalf of the reunited and reconciled American people, saying, quote, "Nothing of this sort could have occurred in anything but a democracy. Our solemn duty is to see that each one of us is in his own consciousness and in his own conduct, a replica of this great reunited people," end quote. There is no mitigation for de-reconciliation. The military is already short on recruiting. How will we reopen sectional differences? That would help that. The cultural impacts are unmitigated. There is no recall of the divisive cultural damage that will be done to our once-great republic. And I'd like to end with, uh, one thing. Of all the bases that have been renamed, all the, um, all the, uh, roads have been renamed, everything has been scraped, now in statues that are down. Tell us, tell us how your life has improved. Take your time. I'll wait. Email me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number fifty-seven, Mauricio Morales.
Hello, ma'am. How do you read me over?
Loud and clear, sir.
I, ma'am, I was not aware of your one-minute time constraint, and so I will be redacting my statement considerably, but I will send in the full statement, uh, for your, uh, records as well as to the president and my elected representatives. And I will read it as quickly as possible. Please forgive me if, uh, if it's a little unintelligible. My name is Mauricio Morales. As a Latin American immigrant, proud Iraq and Afghanistan veteran and Navy retiree, I would like to express my support for keeping the Confederate Memorial at Arlington National Cemetery. I would like to share what the memorial has personally meant to me and how it helped put me on the road to healing from silent wounds. and how it helped put me on the road to healing from silent wounds I brought back from Afghanistan and that I also suffered during a personal crisis in the recent past. During my last tour of duty before retiring several years ago, before the COVID pandemic, I worked in an office building very close to Arlington National Cemetery. Often during lunchtime or in the afternoon after work, I would seek solace by praying while walking through the cemetery. I first came upon the Confederate Memorial by accident. I read the inscriptions but was particularly moved by the famous verse from the Book of Isaiah in the Bible. They have beat their swords into plowshares and their spears into pruning hooks. Since I was going through my own personal conflict at the time, I drew hope and inspiration from the memorial, thinking that if an entire nation could overcome anger, hatred, and the destructiveness of a civil war, then surely at some point I would find healing. I continued to visit, shedding cathartic tears at the memorial virtually every time. Thanks to the Veterans Administration Health System, I am healing and doing much better, but I will never stop visiting the memorial as long as I am able to. I will claim over and over again its message of hope and peace, both societal and personal, and pray that it evokes the same sentiment in anyone willing to look with a discerning eye and heart. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Number fifty-eight, Ed Kennedy. Ed Kennedy.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Ed Kennedy. I spent twenty-nine years in army uniform. I taught a graduate history course at the U.S. Army Command and General Staff College. I'm going to tell you what the bottom line is to this. The effects are that two of my sons served in the Middle East. I encouraged them to serve like me, like my father, like my grandfather. Four of my family members are West Point graduates. My grandchildren will never serve in this hate-filled, immoral military. I guarantee it. I am doing everything I can to make sure other young people do not join because of these disgusting actions against our memorial. Tearing the cemetery and memorial down to soldiers is spiteful, hateful, illegal, and unconscionable. During the war against militant Islam, two of our doctoral manuals, FM three dash twenty-four counterinsurgency and FM three dash zero seven, stability operations, extolled the virtues of cultural understanding, acceptance, and respect. Why do we do this for our enemies, yet we trash our own people's culture? Tearing down a soldier's memorial for bogus and revisionist history reasons is wrong. Now the chief
Sir, your time's expired, sir. Number fifty-nine, Robert Pettis. Robert Pettis. Number sixty-one, David West.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is David West. Thank you for letting me address you today. Excuse me, I have a sore throat. While I'm not a veteran, my father served in the U.S. Army. My youngest brother served in the U.S. Navy. And my late husband served in the U.S. Air Force. As a gay American and a person trained in graphic design, I am appalled that the U.S. Army would seek to destroy a memorial sculpted by Moses Ezekiel, who was not only Jewish, but was also gay. The Army now prides itself on being inclusive and diverse, yet this proposed removal lies in direct opposition to those goals. Just how many minority groups do you seek to dishonor by this action? Another thing I wanted to ask is, I've heard it in the earlier presentation that the two African-Americans on the memorial are said to be enslaved. What proof is there that those are slaves? There's no shackles, there's no chains, there's no whips. I defy you to prove that those were representatives of slaves. I urge you to live up to the words listed on the Arlington National Cemetery logo. Honor, remember, explore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bob Heiser. Bob Heiser. Heister.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
As a retired Navy captain, I took an oath to support and defend the Constitution, and I'm still bound. In eighteen sixty-one, some Americans, after taking that oath, changed their minds and should not today be honored. This monument is an insult to every descendant of American African slaves and belongs in a museum, not as a part of a national monument or cemetery. The Germans don't honor Nazis, and we shouldn't honor Confederates. They are equally evil. In nineteen fifty-eight, when Congress acted, Jim Crow was still in full force, and Bull Connor told American blacks to get to the back of the bus. McKinley, Wilson, and all the rest were creatures of their time when wrenches were common. Confederate traitors forfeited their American-ness when the first shot was fired against Fort Sumter, regardless of when they joined the South, at any time before Appomattox. There should be no memorials to those who took up arms against the United States. All residue, including granite base, must be removed to a museum or be destroyed. Reconciliation this way? No, thanks.
Thank you. Number sixty-three, Tammy Hurley.
Hello, my name is Tammy Hurley from the great state of Texas. And tonight, I ask to keep the Confederate Reconciliation Monument at Arlington Cemetery in its current structure and location because of its eligibility to be added to the National Register. My comments relate to the N H P A questions. I'd like to talk about the historical perspective. To quote the website, arlingtoncemetery.mil, a website administered via the federal government, the history of Arlington National Cemetery allows us to better understand the complex history of the United States. It also states, "The Confederate Memorial offers an opportunity for visitors to reflect on the history and the meaning of the Civil War, all true statements which have not changed." President Woodrow Wilson is quoted at the nineteen fourteen unveiling of the monument. This monument, it represents the best of America, the spirit of reconciliation, democracy, freedom, heroism, and patriotism. Also, removing this monument would be culturally inappropriate during a time when cultural sensitivity is highly valued. Simply stated, history is important to educate. Memorialization of the veterans of all U.S. wars as allowed by Congress is important. Please keep the reconciliation monument as it's currently structured in the Arlington Cemetery. Allow it to be listed on the National Register. Remain within A N C.'s historical district. May God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to try Terry Shiroki again. Terry Shiroki. Go ahead, ma'am. I show you unmuted, Terry Shiroki. We'll have to try to come back. David McAllister.
Hello? Hello, yes, hello?
Go ahead, sir.
Yes.
Loud and clear, sir.
Ms. Yates, this is David McAllister from Florida. Americans build memorials, we don't remove them. This memorial has been put on trial, and to any jury of peers with normal sensibilities, it is a grave marker. The commission did not do public input. First, this is execution before judgment, verdict without trial, and attainder. It's outside the remit, so you must acquit. This memorial clearly qualifies for National Register status, and its area of effect is all of Arlington, and really, all of America because of Arlington's unique position in the American psyche and is essential to our national morale. It has a unique and unmitigatable impact on our culture. The message of removal would dismay our allies and embolden our enemies because the way we treat the veterans of yesterday will signal how the veterans of today will be treated in the future. Out of sight will be out of mind. Arlington will then be irrelevant. Honor, remember, explore will become dishonor, forget, and ignore. It's outside the remit. You must acquit.
Thank you. Number sixty-five, Michael Lucas. Michael Lucas. John Bazaki. John Bazaki. Number sixty-seven, Edward Manick. Edward Manick. Kevin Easterling. Kevin Easterling. Just want to remind everyone, if you call your name, please raise your hand so we can recognize you, so we can unmute your mic. Ron Hartley. Ron Hartley. Jerry Halsted.
Hello?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Jerry Halsted. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I volunteered and wasn't drafted. And this is a very important issue to me because it's very personal. I love America. I'm a patriot, and I also love my great-grandfather, Private Henry H. Halsted, who served in Chapman's Battery and fought with Moses Ezekiel at Newmarket. And he also fought against President William McKinley at the battles of Second Kirns Town and Cedar Creek. So I have ties to this historically, and this monument symbolizes reconciliation and healing, where both sides agree to put the things, the differences behind us. And now this has been turned into some negative symbol by outside agitators, and it angers me that they want to destroy history. They want to destroy a work of, a priceless work of art by a master sculptor, and they've distorted this whole message. My great-grandfather, just as a point, he named my granddad, Henry Ward Beecher Halsted, after Henry Ward Beecher, the famous abolitionist who was brother to Harriet Beecher Stowe. So this was not a racial thing for me, but as a Vietnam veteran, I know what it's like to have my military service disparaged. And I resent the fact that my great-grandfather, who served honorably, lost everything he had, although he survived the war, he ended in a middle institution, and died of, he had melancholia, PTSD. And this should be preserved. It should be put on the National Register of Historic Places. And the agitators will find something else to try to divide us.
Thank you, sir. Your time's expired, sir. Number seventy-one, Calvin Hart. Russell Grayson. Russell Grayson. Gary Jennings. Gary Jennings. Number seventy-four, Robert Chapman.
Yes, ma'am.
Loud and clear, sir.
Can you hear me? Yes, sir, can you hear me? Yes, ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, loud and clear.
Yes, ma'am. As a veteran, I believe this memorial should stay in place, preserve our history, and also, as the gentleman stated earlier about it being reconciliation, and I reserve the rest of my time to the rest of the folks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number seventy-five, Curtis Potte. Curtis Potte. Bonda Morton. Bonda Morton. Donald Smith. Try to unmute one more time, sir. Mr. Smith, try to unmute your, your mic.
Ma'am, can you hear me? I apologize. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir. Sir, are you still there?
Can you hear me, ma'am?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I apologize. I have ancestors that fought for the Union and the Confederacy. The Confederate Memorial needs to remain at Arlington National Cemetery. It is a symbol of our reconciliation between the North and the South that cost the lives of six hundred and twenty thousand, not just Union and Confederate, but of Americans. It needs to be on the Register of National Historic Places, and that's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Number seventy-eight, Charlene Solins. Charlene Solins. Pamela Gill.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Dr. Pamela Alexander Gill. My fifth great-grandfather has Akaya Alexander sign the North Carolina Mecklenburg Declaration of Independence on May twentieth, seventeen seventy-five, before that signed by Jefferson. Almost a hundred years ago, all of this Arlington land belonged to General Robert E. Lee, but was taken away from him. That this memorial in Arlington was decided over a hundred years ago that it should be there. The idea to remove it is an assault on Southerners. Southerners wanted to leave the Union. The North wanted them to stay. They invaded the South. Today, you who voted to remove the memorial want to insult and shame the Southerners again. Shame on you. How can you be so afraid of the dead? Look how many people who signed up to speak are afraid to do so. Shame. This is not the real, true USA. I repeat, you who are trying to remove this memorial should be ashamed. Stop it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number eighty, Wendy Kirby. Wendy Kirby. William David Sweat. William David Sweat. Littleton M. Yates. Littleton M. Yates. Number eighty-three, Kim Monson. Kim Monson. Eric Lambeth. Eric Lambeth. George Berry. There he is.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Got a little bit of an echo, but we can hear you, sir.
Thank you. George Berry. I am grateful for those who have come before me and quoted from people like President William McKinley, who, as a young man, served in the Twenty-third Ohio Infantry, but also referred to the Confederate graves at Arlington as, quote, "a tribute to American honor, valor." I'm also grateful for those who quoted from, uh, President, uh, Calvin Coolidge, a New Englander, who in May nineteen twenty-four gave a very respectful speech at the Confederate Memorial at Arlington. But I, right now, I would like to quote from, uh, George Orwell's nineteen eighty-four, when at one point it was said, quote, "Every record has been destroyed or falsified, every book rewritten, every picture has been repainted, and every statue and street building has been renamed. Every date has been altered, and the process continues day by day and minute by minute. History has stopped, nothing exists except an endless present in which the party, capital P, is always right." The removal of the, of the Confederate Memorial, excuse me, of the Reconciliation Memorial in Arlington would truly be Orwellian. It should not happen, it should be, the memorial should be left completely alone, and it should be on the National Historic Registry. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kim Monson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I...
Go ahead, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay. I'm sorry. I need to run get my notes, I, um, it's not coming up for me right now, can I come right back on in just a moment?
Ma'am, I'll call you back in just a few minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
Robert Kulsia. Robert Kulsa.
Yeah, it's, uh, Kulesa, thank you, Dr. Yates.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Yates, I'm, uh, Rob Kulesa, Tom's River, New Jersey, proud veteran of this nation's army, serving in the One Hundred and First Airborne Division. As many others have stated, I too supported no action in response to this harshly political, highly divisive, and incredibly rushed piece of legislation. There is no place other than Arlington for this beautiful and historic piece of art, and as such, should remain in place. This legislation has ignored years of government policy that had Union and Confederates coming together in reconciliation. Even General Lee's old warhorse, General James Longstreet, supported and aided President Grant's election and administration, that's reconciliation. The question I have for everyone is, once a partisan Congress finally erases the history of eighteen sixty-one to eighteen sixty-five, what do we replace it with? What story will then be told? Dr., um, Director Yates, thank you for giving me this opportunity to voice my opposition.
Thank you, sir. Kim Monson. Kim Monson.
Okay, I'm here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Our monuments tell the story of America. The story of the Monument to Reconciliation is a beautiful reminder that we can overcome and reconcile our differences to unite around this idea that all men are created equal with rights from our creator of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It is important that our generation and our future generations know all of our history. Canceling and censoring our monuments removes the opportunity for conversations about the American idea, its imperfections, remedies, and successes. Slavery existed all over the world at the time of America's founding. It is remarkable that in just eighty-four, eighty-five short years, this young country went to war, ultimately to answer the question with a resounding no, that one man could be the property of another. No other country on the face of the earth has sacrificed blood and treasure to stop slavery. Slavery is prevalent today in our world and in our country through sex and labor trafficking. It would behoove us to work to end slavery in our day instead of demolishing and desecrating our history regarding a question that over six hundred and twenty thousand gave their last full measure of devotion to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. McKim Simington.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Hi, uh, my name is McKim Simington, I'm a member of the SCV and MOS and B. And, uh, my first cousin, Randolph Harrison McKim, the Reverend Randolph Harrison McKim, wrote the poem to the Confederate dead there on the memorial. And he spoke about the man who dared all, risked all, gave all, and died. And I could anybody who wants to understand the timeliness of this beautiful memorial, to look at that poem, to read that poem, I he did. Um, that really tells the story. And I'd also like to say, uh, to Ms. Yates, thank you so much for the gracious way you're handling this. Uh, it's, uh, I could tell you're working hard. Anyway, please preserve this wonderful American monument. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Number eighty-eight, Ephraim Beacon Kita. Ephraim Beacon Kita. Remind you, if you're on the phone, please hit star nine to raise your hand so we can recognize you. William Foster. William Foster. Yes. If you're calling on the four oh six, four zero three, four five six six number, you should be able to unmute your phone. Remember that star six to unmute your phone? William Foster. David Blaine Jenkins. David Blaine Jenkins. Can the caller on the four oh six number unmute, please? Star six will unmute your phone. Caller on for, the four oh six line? Charles Young. Charles Young. Mr. Young, you should be able to unmute your computer and, and speak.
Okay, my name is Charles Young, and I'm calling from Lexington, Kentucky. The, uh, Arlington Memorial is reconciliation. Reconciliation started at President Lincoln's command at the end of the Civil War. No country can heal and move forward long term after a major civil conflict without reconciliation. Look at and study Af- uh, South Africa and Nelson Mandela. You'll learn a bit from that. A hundred and fifty years have passed with acts of reconciliation since the war ended. The creation of the Arlington Memorial Confederate, uh, to Confederate dead was one of those acts. Removal of this memorial is one of several efforts to reverse reconciliation in our lifetime. Acts of reverse reconciliation at this point in our history are exponentially more destructive than acts that required reconciliation in the first place. Just like opening wounds that are on their way to complete healing. Let's be wise and responsible and leave the wound alone to completely heal with time. The body of this nation is capable of healing with time if reconciliation is allowed to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Leslie Alexander. Leslie Alexander. Al Couch. Al Couch. Number ninety-four, James Benton. James Benton. James, you should be able to unmute your computer or phone.
Hi, this is James Benton, uh, of North Carolina, and as, uh, President McKinley was the last US Civil War veteran, veteran to serve as the President of the United States, being promoted to second lieutenant for, for his bravery under fire and antietam. Uh, you know, as president, he saw firsthand of the deplorable conditions of Confederate veterans' graves while touring the, the US after our victory in the Spanish-American War. With all the authority imbued by him by the, his virtue of office, he set forth a trajectory that would result in the creation of the memorial sculpted by Confederate veteran Ezekiel. And the work of this art is a national treasure. Moreover, the healing that originally brought to a nation still fractured by a devastating civil war should always remain the focal point of any assessment related to this asset. And President McKinley was a man driven by honor and duty to do what he would believe was right to reconcile the nation. Now, in the first quarter of the twenty-first century, we seek to undo what he and the Congress of the United States in nineteen oh one brought forward to unite our people. It should not escape the committee that to recommend the removal of this memorial is to undercut the will of the people of the United States at this time, at that time. Who, who are we today to judge actions of a president and Congress in a time of national healing? Why are we judging them and the veterans on the other side of the line who are being honored by a gracious and forgiving nation? You know, uh, simply put, these are, these, this answer, the answer is because the memorial is believed to offend a number of present-day Americans. However, a recent Kaplan-Stradtis study poll shows that sixty percent of Americans do not want to see this memorial removed. And simply put, those are the numbers in the will of the majority of Americans. Based on the foregoing, I respectfully request that Advisory Committee of Arlington National Cemetery recommend to the Secretary of Defense that the Reconciliation Memorial remain untouched in Section Nineteen of Arlington National Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne McLean. Anne, you could come off mute on your computer or phone?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Yates, um, can you hear me now? This is Anne McLean.
Yes, ma'am, we can hear loud and clear.
Terrific, thank you, and thank you for your time. The removal of this reconciliation memorial, it would, is illegal to begin with. And I believe it's eligible certainly as an individual object. It's also outside of the remit of the Congressional Naming Commission, and it would be unmitigatable. But I want to talk to you a moment about it as a piece of fine art. This is an amazing piece by a Prix de Rome winner, um, Moses Ezekiel, as others have said. And it stands as a testimony to the American Renaissance. And who wants to go, remove a piece of a movement that is the Renaissance um, of our country? It's a, the full sculpture program of Washington reflects that, and, and this is a masterpiece. It has references to Michelangelo in the rendering of the Constitution, uh, body, a- as you, as you see on the drum. A- Augustus St. Gaudens is referenced in one of the figures in the Bar Relief with the drape around the head. Winslow Homer's illustrations of war are also in, in every accoutrement and the male, uh, soldiers. This is just a, a treasure, and it should be put back on the tour. It's not even on the trolley tour. And, and most importantly, President Harding said that every line and curve and expression um, is a plea for a united nation under God. And this was most-
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry, your time's expired. Michael Moore Van Ness. Michael?
Yes, ma'am, uh, Director Yates, uh, thanks very much for, uh, your efforts this evening. It's like a principal at a high school graduation calling names and getting, uh, folks in line. Uh, I was born and raised in Washington DC. Um, my grandfather was West Point class in nineteen fourteen, my father was uh, Naval Academy class in nineteen forty-three. And I served, uh, thirteen years in uniform, spent most of my time at Bethesda Naval Hospital. One of the things I came to understand, being born and raised in Washington DC, is that our political class is very smart, they're very ambitious, they want to make their mark, and they can be reckless. And I think this piece of legislation, as Senator Webb pointed out in his Wall Street Journal editorial, uh, this piece of legislation was overbroad and has been interpreted, uh, over broadly. The memorial, uh, to reconciliation has been entrusted to the Army for its care. It's been accepted by generations of veterans, and it provides an opportunity for those of us who visit Arlington National Cemetery to visit family, to open a conversation about things that may be a little bit difficult, that may pass ready understanding. And I think how this is done is, is not within my, uh, wheelhouse, but I do think the Army has an opportunity to witness.
Sir, we, we lost you, but, uh, your time has expired, um, thank you. I want to try Terry Shiroki. Terry Shiroki. Terry Shiroki, you'd ask to try one more time? I'd like to accommodate you. Star nine, if you're calling on your phone to raise your hand. Bert Jones. Bert Jones. Go ahead, unmute yourself, sir.
Can you hear?
Yes, sir.
Uh, first, my name is Bert, and, um, thank you very much for your service for our country. And, uh, hope you can straighten out the terrible, uh, this legislation has, uh, called. Um, I, I, I just cannot understand what benefit comes from trying to delete the history of our country. And I say our country because the South is certainly a major part of this country. Always has been. Uh, before I get to the points on the, um, environmental impact statement, um, I, I just think that we need to go back and look at what's going on here. And what possibly benefit this could give our nation by dividing us, which this certainly does. But to get back to the environmental impact statement, we we look at things like historical gen- historical significance. If that's not- If that's not what this monument represents, you know, I I'm not sure what what else could be said. It definitely should be on the National Register for Historical Places. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Marvin Hullett. Marvin Hullett. Rochelle Murray. Michelle Murray. William Block. Shannon Kimbrel. Shannon Kimbrel. Number one oh three, Jesse Wilson.
Yes, Director, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Jesse Wilson. I'm calling from Buena Vista, Georgia. I am the great, great, great grandson of Private William Howard Cawthorne, who served in Company H, Thirty-First Georgia Volunteer Infantry. Private Cawthorne was wounded in action at Fredericksburg, Virginia, and died of those wounds in December eighteen sixty-two. He is interred in grave number one hundred and eighty, Section sixteen, at the Reconciliation Memorial. As the direct descendant of one of the Confederate soldiers interred in Arlington National Cemetery, this historic memorial has direct and profound significance to my family and myself. I have very serious concerns and objections regarding the removal of a memorial which is located in any cemetery and which serves as a grave marker. This proposal is directly and diametrically opposed to the spirit of reconciliation, the original intent of this memorial. I remain adamantly opposed to this measure and rather advocate for a course of non-action as well as the addition of this artistic masterpiece to the National Register of Historic Places. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Vincent Balducci.
Vincent Balducci from New Jersey. I'm proud of my ancestor, General Fatton Joe Wheeler, who is buried at Arlington. This memorial honors not only his legacy, but the legacy of both North and South and the spirit of reconciliation. To destroy this memorial will send a disturbing message about reconciliation. The South has always been and will always be the true place of diversity, and I am proud of both my Latino heritage and Southern heritage. To destroy this memorial will be an insult to both heritages. This is a diverse memorial that honors everyone's culture, and it also honors the LGBTQ community, as Sir Moses Ezekiel was gay and also Jewish. To destroy this memorial will be an insult to those communities as well. What message will destroying this send to our diverse communities? Lastly, it's out of remit. Y'all must acquit. God bless Dixie, and thank you for y'all's time.
Thank you, sir. David Cooper. David Cooper. Dor Mancini. Dor Mancini. Judy Bowen. Judy Bowen. Try muting one more time, Ms. Bowen. Ms. Bowen, can you try to unmute one more time? Ms. Bowen, we'll come back to you. Ron Moore. Ron Moore. Thoren Walker. Go ahead, Mr. Walker. Thoren Walker, you should be go ahead and speak now. We show you unmuted. If you're using a phone to speak, remember you have to hit star six to unmute. Thoren Walker, you're unmuted. We'll come back to you. Robert Lee Hodge. Robert Lee Hodge. John Goddard. John Goddard. He's I see him. Mr. Goddard.
Yes, John Goddard.
Go ahead, sir.
I read from one of the ancient Jewish prayers, Psalm one forty-three, a plea to God by David when he was fleeing for his life from Saul, who was one of the rich men north of Richmond of that day. Hear my prayer, O Lord, in thy faithfulness answer me and in thy righteousness, for the enemy hath persecuted my soul. He hath smitten my life down to the ground. He hath made me to dwell in darkness as those that have been long dead. Therefore is my spirit overwhelmed within me. My heart within me is desolate. I remember the days of old. I meditate on all thy works. I muse on the work of thy hands. Hear me speedily, O Lord. Hide not thy face from me, lest I be like unto them that go down into the pit. Deliver me, O Lord, from mine enemies, for I flee unto thee to hide me. Quicken me, O Lord, for thy name's sake, for thy righteousness' sake. Bring my soul out of trouble. And of thy mercy cut off mine enemies and destroy all them that afflict my soul, for I am thy servant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Daniel Kelly. Daniel Kelly. David Fawcett. David Fawcett. Number one hundred and fifteen, Michael Migliara. I'm gonna finish this list first. William Mason. William Mason. Tom Longmire.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Yeah, my name is Tom. Tom Longmire. To me, removing removing this memorial or any Confederate or history memorial is straight out of the Marx's handbook. Veterans on both sides of war have been respected for over a hundred years. Woodrow Wilson attended the fiftieth Gettysburg reunion. FDR attended the seventy-fifth. And Harry Truman, a member of the Sons of Confederate Veterans, desegregated the Union military eighty-three years after the war. Gerald Ford, Jimmy Carter reinstated Leon Davis's citizenship, and Joe Biden voted in favor of that. Lincoln stated the war was not about slavery. He wanted his money. The South was paying eighty-five percent of the revenue. You can't go back a hundred and sixty years and accuse somebody of treason when no Confederate was ever tried, most less convicted for treason. Jefferson Davis was not brought to trial because it would have indicted the North. President Johnson pardoned all Confederates in eighteen sixty-eight. And remember Lincoln's words, malice towards none and charity for all. So let's end the malice and support our Confederate history and veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Helen Humber. Helen Humber. Tom Crane.
I'm Tom Crane from Texas. The memorial- the memorial says, but in simple obedience to duty, as they understood it, these men suffered all, sacrificed all. This memorial says nothing about Confederate leaders, nothing about Confederate states of America. It is a Trump-like twisting of the facts to claim that this memorial commemorates the Confederate states of America. As a veteran of twenty-eight years and one tour in the Iraq War, I find it deeply offensive that this removal is even contemplated. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Eric Wisnia. Eric Wisnia. Stephen Fagan Kelly.
Yes, good evening, Director Yates. Removing the memorial is illegal. The Army ignored the enabling legislation that required to consider local sensitivities. The Secretary of Defense exceeded his authority by adopting a recommendation that did not meet the requirements of the twenty twenty-one NDAA Section three seventy-G four that required that local sensitivities be considered. The eight-person naming commission did not ask the opinion of anyone, not even the congressly mandated on ten US Code, Section seven seven two-three Oversight Committee. The Advisory Committee on Arlington National Cemetery, this is a grave site, an international tourist destination, and our nation's sacred shrine. No local sensitivities were considered. This whole thing is illegal, and we shouldn't even be having this meeting right now. I would also say this reconciliation memorial is part of the culture of not only America but of the world. To say that the effect is limited to a small part of the cemetery is disingenuous. The area of potential effect being considered is too small. This memorial is eligible to be a contributing object of its own historical significance within ANC, which is a National Register Historic District, which is the only national military cemetery with that designation. Former Secretary of the Navy and Senator Jim Webb's recent op-ed in the Wall Street Journal shows how the memorial is a testament to how to reunify a nation after civil war, which he used with officials in Vietnam after that war. If America cannot accept its own reconciliation, how can we promote it to other war-torn cultures? The area proposed effect that's proposed is just a small area inside the cemetery. This ignores the importance of the reconciliation message that America set by example for the world after our own bloody fratricidal war.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Going to go back and try Judy Bowen. Judy Bowen. Ms. Bowen, you could take yourself off mute. And remind individuals that you can put, please provide us comments in writing off our website. I'll revisit that at the end of the meeting. Or it is on the screen in front of you. Theron Walker.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Theron Walker from Charleston, South Carolina. First of all, yes, the Confederate Reconciliation Memorial and Grave Marker of Ezekiel Moses should absolutely be individually listed in the NRHC. As such, the current proposal to destroy it is even more egregious, in addition to being profane and outright macabre. The adverse effects on Arlington National Cemetery of the proposal to destroy this beautiful and meaningful memorial are clear and can neither be mitigated nor avoided. Further, this proposed memorial removal is exactly what Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act was meant to prevent. Additionally, the monument meets the federal definition of a grave marker under established existing federal code. As such, it is specifically outside the remit of the naming commission's authority. There is no congressional approval for this removal. Lastly, the precedent of removing memorials to dead soldiers in the US should never be set. Otherwise, in twenty years, we could be talking about the proposed federal destruction of the Vietnam Memorial, since some say it represents American imperialism or some similar act of historical revisionism. The only possible solution here for the Confederate Reconciliation Memorial is a no-action strategy. Thank you, Ms. Yates, for the good job you're doing, and I yield further time.
Thank you. This time, David Bennett. J. David Bennett.
Hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
My my name is J. David Bennett and I want to share my concerns about what's been happening, what's going on here. I'm confounded at the destruction of a memorial of reconciliation. It's based with the bitter spirit of divisiveness. Our children are taught that we are one nation under God. But the woke crowd must have been answered that day in school. This is just an attack on our religious heritage. This is nothing more or nothing less because as we try to draw together as one nation under God, the woke crowd is attempting to divide us into nations and have us fight with one another rather than fight the obtrusive government that's recognized by this foolishness that's going on here now, that they're trying to take away the a grave memorial and cemetery as some kind of prize to be won. So I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. Robert Lee Hodge.
You hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, thank you. This is my third call that I've been on in regards to this. And there was only one time when anybody spoke against or in favor of of taking the memorial down. And so it seems overwhelming based on the public comment that I've heard that this should stay. I wish the administration would be more sympathetic to this. I used to live in Arlington and go to that monument for reflective purposes. And I wonder if the people that would like to take the monument down have ever really experienced going there and just reflecting. It's very peaceful. It's not a really a war memorial at all. Of course, everybody says it's a reconciliation memorial. And when you think about the women who raised the money for the monument, the women that lost their loved ones in the war, the daughters, the sisters, the mothers. It's quite an interesting story there. It's also not only a memorial but a grave. And so I think there's fundamental issues here at stake and the inertia from it. Where do where do we go from here? Do more things get ripped down? You know, what what happens? And so I do believe, as the gentleman said before, this is somewhat Orwellian. I can't help but think that. And also Marxism to some degree. It's very strange. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This time I'm going to call Hal Cardwell. Hal Cardwell. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm the commander in Southern California for the Military Order of Stars and Bars. I have about thirty ancestors that fought for the South. And I do not want to see this memorial taken down. This this what they're doing, what this government is doing is ludicrous. It's tyranny to our country. And that's what that's all I have to say. Thank you. I'll yield my time.
Thank you, sir. Justin Cruz.
Yes, this is Justin Cruz. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to say first of all that I would like to speak about my ancestor, who was Noah Cruz in the Twenty-Sixth Georgia Volunteer Infantry. Again, there was also conscripts in the Confederate states, so not- So not, not all of them were volunteers. Some of them went by duty of their states, and they had no choice. Again, there is a lot of honor at stake here for the South, and there's a lot of reconciliation that the South had to give to the North as well. During the wrecking of Atlanta, there was shelling going on during Mr. Cruz's funeral. It's written about in the book called What the Yankees Did to Us. And there's a lot of reconciliation that was given on both sides. So I do not think this is a scab that needs to be opened up. This reconciliation memorial should be on the National Register of Historic Places, and everyone should look at it as a place of reconciliation. Inseccionalism is something that is meant for developing countries. It shouldn't be something that we have to experience again. It's ludicrous and Orwellian. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Robert Hayward.
Yes, can you hear me? Hello?
Ye- yes, sir.
All right, thank you for having me on. Just great comments so far. You know, this is a good representation of what America and the world really believes. I've never talked to anybody who wants to remove that beautiful memorial that's over there. Everybody who's thought about it has thought it's outrageous to even consider its removal. I've been to at least a thousand cemeteries, and that's without exaggeration. And that beautiful historical war memorial, Arlington National Cemetery, is the most beautiful I've ever seen. I mean, Arlington, Virginia, the United States should be very proud of that memorial. I've visited that memorial often. It's a soothing place, a reverence, a peace. You know, that memorial was dedicated by U.S. presence in the spirit of fraternity, reconciliation, reunification, respect, honor, I mean, American valor. That's what it represents. To remove Moses Ezekiel's reconciliation memorial from Arlington Cemetery that was blessed by three United States presidents would not only dishonor those presidents, but also all veterans of the United, of the Union and Confederate armies that came together in reconciliation. If former soldiers who actually fought one another on the battlefield can bury the hatchet, why can't this generation? The scariest books I've ever read is what Stalin, Lenin, and Mao did once they got in power, and we're starting to see that happen right around us. Streets, parks, United States Army bases, schools, all being named around us, many to our founding fathers, now it's cemeteries. Some in Arlington even want to remove Lee's name from his own home in Arlington National Cemetery. I mean, even the Taliban didn't stoop this low to attack memorials and cemeteries. Many are asking, "Where did America go?" This will only cause further division and harm America for the future. Leave that memorial alone. Please let them know over their Pentagon, whoever's making these decisions, that it's going to inevitably divide and hurt America forever if this memorial is removed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Robert Lee Hodge. Sorry, my apologies. John Trent. John Trent.
Thank you again, Director Yates. A little further comment that I wanted to make, since we have a little extra time, apparently. I have a brother who was a Vietnam veteran. And all I would ask is this. If we're going to look at this Confederate monument as something that can be removed from Arlington, what happens next? And so the Vietnam veterans.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank everyone for your comments today. We've been on for quite some time, and I acknowledge that we've been here for three hours and appreciate your patience and your willingness to provide us your comments. I would like to remind everyone, this is for the public record, and that is why we need full names before we present anyone. But we appreciate all your comments for our public scoping period. Before we close our meeting, I wanted to take a moment to let you know what's happening in the next few weeks. A reminder that the public scoping comment period will end at eleven fifty-nine P.M. Eastern Standard Time on September second. Comments can be submitted through the comment form, which can be accessed from the Confederate Memorial Project website. Our NEPA team will be reviewing the comments as they work toward developing the draft EIS. Our cultural resources team will continue their activities for developing the assessment of the effects as part of our NHPA Section one oh six process. And looking a little farther out, on the horizon, we anticipate the draft EIS will be ready for public release by the end of September. Be sure to add yourself to the email list to be notified of the draft release. Additional updates on public comment processes will be publicized via the Federal Register, the ANC website, and our social media platforms. I will now turn the floor over to Colonel Wyker to provide a few final closing remarks this evening.
We appreciate your participation in today's public scoping meeting. If you wish to participate further in the public comment process, public comment scoping process, please visit the project website to access the comment form and be added to our email list. This website also provides a range of information about this project and the process. If you have additional questions related to the project or process, please send an email to the address shown on the bottom of the slide. Thank you for your time this evening.